Good afternoon. I'd like to call the August 25th, 2025 Calvin County Council Meeting to Order. Rebecca, would you give us the location?
All right, let us pray. Dear Lord, guide us with wisdom, unite us in purpose, and bless our community with our service. Amen.
Do we have...
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You ready for motion?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the agenda to include first reading by title only of Ordinance 2025-19.
You have a second?
Second.
About the move in second that we amend the agenda, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda to include the amended version.
Second.
About the move in second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, ayes have it. Now we open for public comments.
Mr. Chairman, we've got Travis Ward.
Mr. Ward.
Good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to be here with you all tonight. My name is Travis Ward, I'm the Vice President of Operations of the Electric Cooperatives of South Carolina. We're the trade association that works for eighteen of electric cooperatives in our state to support them in their mission of delivering safe, affordable, and reliable power to more than one million South Carolinians. Their mission is rooted not only in delivering electricity, but in strengthening the communities they serve. That is why today is so meaningful. We are thrilled to be here today to begin work on a new line workers' training school and the captain of Sandy Run Industrial Park. A place for the next generation of line workers will be prepared for one of the most important roles in our industry. This site will also serve another vital purpose, acting as a coordination center for storm restoration efforts. When severe weather hits, as we saw in recent events such as Hurricane Lee, cooperatives from across our state, our region, and sometimes across the country come together to rebuild and restore. Having this facility in place will make us stronger and more resilient when our members need us most. We are especially grateful to the Sandy Run community for welcoming us to your home. Your support ensures that this project will not be just a training ground, but a true asset to the communities across our state. I also want to recognize those of you that have made this project possible. So this county council, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Hall, and the rest of the amazing team at the county administrator's office, as well as the team at Red Rocks Development, the leadership at Tri-County Electric Cooperatives, and the partners at the Sandy Run Industrial Park, thank you for your leadership, your collaboration, and your vision. This project reflects the best of what partnership can achieve. By bringing together local leaders, community members, and cooperatives across our state, we are creating a resource that will serve South Carolina for decades to come. On behalf of South Carolina's electric cooperatives, thank you for your support, your welcome, and your commitment to making this vision a reality.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Again, thank you, sir, and we appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Chad Lauter.
I just want to concur with what Travis said. This is really a momentous occasion for the co-op South Carolinas, not just Tri-County, but every co-op in South Carolina that statewide serves. Their current training facility has been in Lexington County for generations. It was the first one put up there. It's small, and with today's lineman training that they have to have, it doesn't meet the needs. And by this investment, and through the ability of the county to help out, this is going to be state-of-the-art training for line workers, utility workers, for all the co-ops in South Carolina, not even to mention our annual lineman rodeo celebration, which is a lineman rodeo competition between all the linemen in the state get together. That will be housed at this location as well. So I hope this is just a great benefit for the county. I know it's going to be a benefit for all the co-ops, and we just appreciate everything the county's done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No more public comments. We're now in a public hearing on Ordinance 2025-15, third reading. An ordinance to provide for the insurance and sale of a tax anticipation borrowing of Calvin County, South Carolina, in a principal amount of not exceeding $22,500,000 in anticipation of the collection of ad verum taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. To describe the terms and conditions of such borrowing in the form of notes, to be executed ever destined the same, to make provisions for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto. We're now in a public hearing on Ordinance 2025-15. Any comments or questions from the public?
Not yet, you go ahead, close talk.
Okay, no comments. We're out of the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-15. And a motion for approval of Ordinance 2025-15.
So moved.
Second.
About the move in second.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know that tonight with us, we've got Mike Gallagher with Compass Financial Advisors. He's the financial advisor that's working with us on this, also works with many of the school districts and a bunch of people across the straight state. And so, in case you guys had any questions or any concerns, if there was anything that you wanted to clarify, he was gracious enough to come down and ask any questions if there were any.
Ken, you had any, you dealt with the schools with that type of...
No, we did it annually with the school system because, like I've stated in the previous meeting, one of the previous meetings, when your fiscal year and your tax year don't line up, then you're having to start operating, start your operations and have money to operate with until those taxes come in. And that's the only thing you're doing is covering up that offset with the money. And you only get it if you need it, so.
How much have we had to borrow before to do this?
I don't think we've ever done it.
We've never had it.
We've never had it.
First time we did it.
Yeah. Back to me, I was always surprised that we never did it.
Never had one.
Because we had always done it with the school system, you know, to make payroll and all that kind of stuff. Of course, we had a lot more employees and stuff.
Seems to me something like a debit or credit card, you don't use it unless you have to use it.
Yeah.
Just so you're sure.
Yes.
That's all that is.
It's a lot of credit.
I can clarify it if needed, but yes, you don't draw it down, you don't spend it unless you need it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I think that's a whole lot of money, and I feel like we need to operate within our budget, and that is a whole lot to ask for, especially since we've never had to do it before, so.
I just want to say, we're not asking for the money actually, it's a lot of credit. I just want to play into the public, we're not borrowing any money on that. I don't know where it'd come out that we're borrowing money. We hadn't borrowed a dime when it yet. We may not, hopefully we won't have to. But we have to protect our interests in case our taxes come in late. And they'll go get paid back if taxes got came in.
Well, it's not, and it's not necessarily that they're going to be paid late. Even if they're paid on time, they're not paid in time to run the first half of our year, I mean, the first portion of our year. You see what I'm saying?
They have been in the past, so...
We can't judge on the past. We have to go on what may happen down the road. We don't know. I mean, we can't go on the past, especially these days, the way the economy is and stuff. You can't judge on what happened in the past last year. Can't deal with that. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, ayes have it. If we have one...
One opposition.
One opposition. Okay. On Ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance to amend chapter, third reading, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6 of the Calvin County Code of Ordinances, to amend the responsibilities and duties for enforcement of animal control ordinances, and to provide that such enforcement shall be the responsibility of the Calvin County Sheriff's Office and other matters relating thereto. May I have a motion? I'm sorry, we're in a public hearing on that. And let me just say this, I meant to close the public hearing out on ordinance. Did I do that?
Yeah.
So right now, we're in a public hearing on Ordinance 2025-16. The floor is open for comments from the public. Hearing none, ordinance 2025-16 is now closed. We have a motion for approval of Ordinance 2025-16.
So moved.
Second.
About the move in second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, ayes have it. Approval of the minutes, we have a motion for approval of the June 28th, 25th regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
About the move in second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, ayes have it. Okay. We're down to proclamations recognizing August as Emergency Management Awareness Month. I'm sorry, Awareness Month. Do I have a copy of that, or somebody want to read that?
Yes, sir, I'll read it for you. Proclamation recognizing August as Emergency Management Awareness Month, whereas Calvin County recognizes the critical role of emergency management in protecting the lives and property of our residents, and whereas the month of August presents an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of emergency preparedness, and to recognize the dedicated professions who work tirelessly to prepare for, respond to, and recover from all hazards, and whereas effective emergency management requires the collaboration of government agencies, community organizations, businesses, and individual citizens, and whereas residents of Calvin County are encouraged to participate in National Preparedness Month in September by learning about potential hazards in their area and developing personal and family emergency plans, and whereas Calvin County residents can take advantage of resources available through Calvin County's Emergency Management Agency to learn about preparing for emergencies and disasters. Now therefore, I, Jane Tagler, County Council Chairman of Calvin County, do hereby proclaim the month of August as Emergency Management Awareness Month in Calvin County, and urge all residents to join in recognizing the vital role of emergency management in building a safer and more resilient community. In witness thereof, I have here and two set my hand and cause to seal Calvin County be affixed to this 25th day of August 2025.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or do we have a motion that we approve that proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
About the move in second that we approved the proclamation recognizing August as Emergency Management Awareness Month. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, ayes have it. Under appearance, Dave, I'm going to get your name right this time. Mr. David Shinaki, Emergency Management Agency Director, he had a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You did great. Counsel, good evening. I brought some folks with me today. I wanted to introduce you to these gentlemen here who are integral part of emergency management. Bill and I can't do everything at all times, and so we need help. And so these three gentlemen are volunteers. First is Lee Ott. He is in charge of our Ares Amateur Radio Emergency Services Group. It's a volunteer group that will help us provide communications at any time, but specifically during emergencies. Richard Klein works extensively up at the Hayward Park every Saturday. If you want to come over there, he's up there. He sets up his amateur radio station and teaches people about amateur radio, makes contacts throughout the world. Phil Shreves is here today. He's one of our volunteers. In fact, we were talking earlier in my office, in the last couple of years that Phil has been working with us, not only has he donated equipment to the county specifically for our hand radio repeaters and our repeaters for VHF at Doodle Hill and Hemlock, he's also donated about, probably in excess of 200 hours of service to the county. Phil and Lee both worked on our trailer when we did our remodel last year, and thanks to Councilman Carson, we now have an ambulance that we're going to refurbish and set that up for communications as well. So I told him, I asked him to come here so that they could talk to you today, but I'm not going to let him talk. I actually brought him here to give them some awards. Randy has those over there. So Richard Klein first. Thank you. And this is presented to Richard Klein, thank you for advancing amateur radio in Calvin County, and then today's date. Thank you, sir. And then Phil.
He wanted me to be here, man, I'm afraid all of them.
And this one is presented to Phil Shreves. Thank you for your countless hours donated to Calvin County. And then last is, this one here is for Lee, presented to Lee Ott. Thank you for your dedication to Ares and Calvin County, and today's date as well. Thank you, sir. Without that, we wouldn't have a robust communications plan. And the four of us sat down and we figured out how we can set up an emergency communications. If we ever lose power, ever lose our repeater system, cell phones go down, landlines go down, we still can utilize amateur radio, and we can receive emails from outside the area that's affected. If somebody wants to do a, check the welfare, or has an issue that needs to be addressed, we can receive an email from them via amateur radio, and then dispatch fire, EMS, or law enforcement, whoever that we have. So I want to thank you for allowing me to talk to them today. I also want to thank you for that proclamation. You know, we're not first responders in emergency management. We're actually the last responders. But when we show up to a scene, it's really bad. However, we're behind the scenes supporting law enforcement, fire, and EMS, and not just during a disaster, but before disasters, and then we also assist with recovery. So I wanted to thank you for that. Can I be selfish and ask you if we could come around the front, take a picture with these gentlemen in the proclamation? That's right. I would greatly appreciate it. Any questions I might be able to answer? Thanks, man.
No, Dave, we just want to thank you for what you do, and, you know, we get emails all the time, and you keep abreast of what's going on with the weather. We appreciate that, and that kind of keep us, keep us kind of settled on what to do. So we appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
I like to say, thanks for giving David's fore, he needs to do his job. I'm going to brag on him a little bit. We had an exercise earlier this year, and I told people around the state, he participated in the exercise, and guess what job he did? He did his job. He was the one handling incidents that we were getting over amateur radio, and he was the one that said, all right, I need EMS delivered here. And he would write all of the reports that he would normally do during a real incident, send out. He was the only one in the state that did that.
I've been all over the state doing amateur radio, and David was one of the few people that actually has this absolutely covered. I mean, the other counties are just behind us, and what David's done is just incredible.
Thank you. Okay, let's take that.
I just want to say something. Y'all can come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
Thank God, absolutely. I came in there and visited. Very impressed. I was very impressed with what y'all can do and talk around the world, you know, so thank you.
Thank you.
They want us down there back here.
Good, good.
They want us to go out and look.
They were good, selfless.
Guys, hold up your awards if you would, please. Mr. James, why don't you come on over here?
Can we give them all our...
Ramage.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Howdy, maker.
Howdy, maker.
Thank you.
Ms. Westbury from Calvin Cares.
Mr. Chairman, council members, county administrator's staff, and the public, I'm willing to hear this. As the treasurer of Calvin County Cares, I am happy to report that Calvin County Cares began, gave a sizable amount back to the community. You know that we provide the resources for community events, and anything where there's a need, we try to provide and help people. And we do it by selling donated items that people donate and give to us. We have a wonderful group of volunteers who sort through some things that sometimes are un-sortable, but we have all kinds of things. We're like a mini-market. Again, we have new things that are brand new, some have still have the tags on them, but we are always there to provide things for people at a very low price that can't afford to go somewhere and buy something at an expensive price. And, you know, we operate under the Calvin County Community Resource Development Board, which is a mouthful, but we're not involved with the county. We are all volunteers, every one of us. Our fiscal year starts in July and it ends in June. Last year, by working three hours a week, and think about that, three hours a week and one Saturday a month, we took in $82,153 in sales. That is amazing. If you put per hour how much we took in, Cecil runs the furniture store, I bet you can tell you that's pretty good. But we do so much business, and people get, really get good bargains. But then on the other hand, we turn all that money around, and we give it back to the county. Everything we do goes back to the county. And we would like to have more than what we've had, because we're running out of people to get things to. I want you to look over at the sheet that I gave you. This year, we sponsored, with the help of the American Legion, asked it to sponsor two boys to the Boys' Day. We fully paid those boys to go to the Boys' Day, those extra boys. We helped the Boy Scout troop at First Baptist. It's not, no longer going to be a charter after this year. We finished them off by letting the Eagle Scouts finish, and we helped with that. Cameron had a fall festival. We donated money to help with that. And of course, we've always given money for utilities for the SSS, for the adult, people in productive care, to foster children. We've been doing that for years, 21 years we've been doing this stuff. We gave to the July 4th fireworks show. Now, we didn't give for the fireworks, we gave for the equipment so that the kids could play. We wanted the kids in Calvin County to have something to do, and that's what we did for that, for the bouncy houses and all that stuff. Calvin County Hospital wanted to have a drama production last year. They had no money. They'd never done that before. Costs a lot of money to put on a drama when you're getting copyrights, so we provided the money for that. The Boys to Men Club, the Epsilon, they do the Cameron Boys to Men, they mentor young boys. They have a camp, they come in, we provide supplies for that. We helped with the Four Bike Community Center. And how many of you have seen a ramp being built in Calvin County by First Baptist Church? Do you know how much it costs to build a ramp just for the equipment and stuff? They don't charge you to build the ramp, but you've got to go buy the lumber and the screws, and it's got to be all done right. It's got to be perfected. So they do that. We give money for just supplies. We helped with the Four Bike Community Festival. We gave Guess 70 Baptist Church money for their food industry. They serve like 82 people a week up there. That's a lot of people for food. Orangeburg Calvin County Technical Foundation, we give money to help the people who have been out of school for five to 10 years. They want to go back to school, they don't have the funds to do it, but they don't have a babysitter, they don't have transportation. So those people are the ones we touch to go back, to finish their education and to get something. Those are vetted through Orangeburg Tech. Purple Market Festival, there again, we gave the equipment to the kids to play on, the playground present. Oh, and how many of you have been to a soccer game at the recreation park? Guess who gave the bleachers? If you sat on those bleachers, we paid for them. So, Soccer Hatchet came in and worked on houses all through the summer. We gave supplies so Soccer Hatchet could work on those Calvin County houses. This year, the Angels softball team went on to play for the state. They had three girls from Calvin County that could not afford what they needed. We provided that for them. We helped with the Christmas parade, we helped with the Kristen Back to School bash, which we do every year. Every year, we give for Chromebooks for the school. We helped with the K through three. We give it to all schools, not just one, all three. And Droso, you have diabetes, you can't get your medicine. You walk in the second, you see pharmacy, and Mike quit care, but you get it, because we pay for it. So this is what Calvin County Cares does. We do care, and we try real hard to provide for community events. We can't give to an individual. Nobody can walk to us and say, give me $10 to go get something. We don't do that. We do it for the community. We operate on trust, love, and commitment, and we know that God provides, because there's never been a time when we have not had money to give to others. So I want to thank everybody who shops with us. I'd like for you to go through your closets and give us what you don't use, love to have it back. And thank you for letting us speak. Thank you for renting the building to us so that we can do this. And thank you for being great council people for Calvin County. Sometimes I don't think you all get the credit you need to get. I want to personally thank you, okay? As a former wife of a co-op, there's no more co-op person here then, but I was a wife of a co-op general manager. I know what that means. I know what happens when a storm comes. So that is a wonderful thing you're doing. Okay, another big... All right, any questions? Anybody?
I just got a couple of comments. I want to really thank you for, I mean, y'all named yourselves, right? Calvin Cares. That is a name that fit in you all, what you do. I just point out one incident is our recreation, you know, our budget had been processed for the year, and one group I saw near the Calvin County, well, they had C-C-R-I, C-C-R-I...
I didn't mention that, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, the basketball summer program, it was too late for us to, we didn't have the money budgeted in the county. So I said, well, let me talk with Ken, who's the chairman of the Recreation Committee. And Ken said, man, we got money, we can do something for that, you know, and y'all sponsored that, and we really, really appreciated that.
That was a last minute, very last minute thing, but we were happy we could do that.
Yeah, I saw they got some publicity in the paper, and y'all name was being fine print, but I'm one, you can't do anything without the money. If you don't have the money, you can't do it, and so I really appreciate you all stepping in, Ken, and really doing that. So thank you all.
And just about every time I go up there and donate stuff, Tracy Burns is in there doing that tedious task of separating those clothes. She's done a lot of work up there in the past, so I really appreciate her doing all that work.
Tracy Burns and Dina Soes are our co-managers. They do a beautiful job in that shop. They do, it's amazing. We've had people from out of state come in and shop, and they're visiting, and they'll say, I can't believe this thrift shop looks like this. We go in, it's clean as a pen, and it is, it's as neat as it can be. I'm very proud of both of, all of what they do, and I'm over it.
Let me, let me make, and this is small, okay? If you have something and you think it's unusable, like torn up clothes or whatever, like the day I carried, I forget how many thousand pounds of textiles that were not used. I carry them to Walderboro, and we sell about a pound, so we do get money for that as well. So I went to Walderboro at 7:30, 7 o'clock this morning, dropped it off, then carried our trailer again.
We're very proud of both of, all of what they do, and our board.
Let me, let me make, and this is small, okay? If you have something and you think it's unusable, like torn up clothes or whatever, like the day I carried, I forget how many thousand pounds of textiles that were not used. I carry them to Walderboro, we sell about a pound, so we do get money for that as well. So I went to Walderboro seven thirty, seven o'clock this morning, dropped it off, then carried our trailer to get serviced and stuff like that. But don't think that if you've got a sheet with a hole in it, that nobody wants it, because they make shop rags and all that kind of stuff out of that stuff, and so all of that stuff gets used. I mean, now, certainly, we don't want something, and we've had boxes dropped off that everything was covered with mold and all that, been in a wet building or something, we can't use that. Or we get certain items that can't be repaired. Don't, don't, don't back off from bringing particularly textile items. We do have a use for them, five cents a pound now that we get for them.
One year, we got chicken bones. I figured out why in the world anybody would put chicken bones in a drop off there. But then I thought, well, maybe somebody does make things out of.